Good morning. This is Friday, May 11th. This is the Los Angeles City Council. We meet on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. For those of you that cannot make it to City Hall, we encourage you to watch Channel 35, where we are televised as well as going on to our website. We are still waiting for Councilmember Han, Councilmember Weisar, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Councilmember Garcetti, who is excused to be a little bit late. Oh great, Mr. Rosendahl's here. Thank you very much. So I'd like to acknowledge, for our first presentation, Councilmember Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's with great pleasure that I recognize Victoria Aguayo, Regional Director of Region 21 of the National Labor Relations Board. After 22 years as Regional Director, Victoria retired earlier this month, and she's standing here with her mother today. And I wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge her for all of her work throughout the years. She leaves a long list of accomplishments. In her capacity as Regional Director for the NLRB, she oversaw the investigation and litigation of unfair labor practice charges of numerous cases. She also worked diligently to find resolutions to questions concerning representation under the National Labor Relations Act. Victoria's leadership was instrumental in the investigation and settlement of over 50 unfair labor practice charges involving year-long contract disputes between major Los Angeles area hotels and Unite Local 11. She was also very active in the investigation and resolution of numerous high-impact Southern California charges arising from the 2000 janitorial strike. She is an extraordinary woman who went above and beyond her duties to prevent and remedy unfair labor practices, whether committed by organizations or employers. With her long list of successful undertakings, it is evident that the person who follows her as new Regional Director will have very tough shoes to fill. I wanted to thank her for joining us here today and wish her well in her retirement, and ask her to say a few words and introduce the people who are standing behind her. There's a lot more people here. So more than I realized. Recognize the friends and colleagues who are here with her today.
Thank you very much.
If you need to.
All right. Good morning. Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. Yes, I'd like to acknowledge, first of all, my colleagues from Region 21, the downtown Los Angeles offices of the National Labor Relations Board, as well as a colleague from headquarters. They are Hector Martinez, Julie Gutman, John Haddam, Patrick Cullen, Liz Valtiera, Jessica Totin, Wingfield Twiman, Alan Wu, Sonia Sanchez, Helen Aloe, Linda Barbie, and Joseph Banishevsky. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of my dear mother, Maria del Carmen Perez, who is standing beside me, and my son, Matthew Shupac, who is Deputy to City Councilman Jack Weiss. I wish to acknowledge the excellent work that has been performed by members of the NLRB staff downtown Los Angeles. In the over 20 years that I have served as Regional Director, I have depended on them daily. Their dedication to public service and the mission of the agency has enabled me to do my job in the way that I think befits my position. And I want to thank them for their work and dedication to public service. I acknowledge also that many in here are public servants, and this week we celebrate public service. And I salute all of you, and thank you very much for this recognition. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. I'll present this to you again in the back. You'll have a nice group shot, but just a real quick one here. Look this way. And we'll all go in the back and do it as a group.
Thank you.
I'll join you. I'll walk you all in the back and go into the newsroom in just a second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and I just have one more.
Thank you.
And I'm going to join these groups in the back also for a nice picture. I'd like the members of My Choice program from Manual Arts High School to join me at the podium.
Hi.
Hello, happy to meet you.
I like the mother. Come on up. Hi. How are you?
I'm Noah.
How are you?
Hi, Dr. Shurey.
I see you, Zachary. Go, hi. You okay?
Yes.
All right, good. All right. It's a pleasure to welcome members of the My Choice Teen Pregnancy Prevention Program. The My Choice program is designed to educate students on issues related to pregnancy prevention. My Choice program was developed by the Children's Hospital and is coordinated by the Manual Arts High School Health Center. Teen pregnancy prevention programs such as My Choice are extremely important, especially when you consider that we are living in a country where four out of 10 teenage girls will become pregnant at least once before the age of 20. In fact, 50,000 teenagers will have babies this year in California alone. Startling statistics such as these are why we need to come together as a community to provide our young people with education and health services that they need in order to prevent teen pregnancy. To bring attention to this epidemic, I ask you to join me in recognizing May as National Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. By bringing awareness to this issue, I hope we can reduce teenage pregnancy rate so that we can give these young people an opportunity to do well in life. And I want to thank the staff and the students of My Choice Teen Pregnancy Prevention Program for joining us here today and for helping to bring light on this important issue. Now, the folks who are here with me today, Matt Moyer, who is the program coordinator, Julie McAvoy, program director, Noah Garcia, health educator, Eddie Martinez, who is a student and a member of the Youth Health Action Board. And supporters are Abu Izquierdo, Jenny Oroche, Bertrand, Perdomo, and Shirley Thornton, and Mr. Trimis. Is Mr. Trimis here? No, he's not here. Okay. And I'd just like to ask your designee, if somebody could just say a few words. Somebody want to say a few words?
Sure.
Okay.
Good morning. We'd like to thank you for recognizing National Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month and for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Matt Moyer. I'm the project coordinator of the My Choice project. And as Ms. Perry said, it's a teen pregnancy prevention program at Manual Arts High School. Teen pregnancy prevention continues to be an important issue, and we know that despite the record decline in teen pregnancy rates in California, more than 50,000 teenagers will have babies in California just this year, and that means one out of every three girls become pregnant before they turn the age of 20. And if that isn't enough, one out of every two Latino girls becomes pregnant as a teenager, further costing California taxpayers an estimated $1.5 billion for teen births in California. So Los Angeles, I think, and the rest of the state is at a critical juncture in teen pregnancy prevention efforts, as many teen pregnancy prevention programs have already been cut, and a number of factors threaten to reduce and eliminate other successful teen pregnancy prevention programs that really have contributed to this decline. So as the teen population grows, adults have an obligation to provide young people with educational health services that they need in order to prevent teen pregnancy and sexually transmitted infections. So if the students could say just a few words, we want to thank you very much for this opportunity, Ms. Perry, and Ms. Pamela Huntun and the distinguished members of council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Say your name.
Thank you. Yeah. Hello, my name is Jenny Oroche. I'm a peer educator at the Manual Arts High School. There are many reasons why the My Choice program has been very successful. A lot of lives, no, a lot of habits in the lives of teens have been changed for the betterment of their future because of all this education we are getting and all the... Yeah, all the education we're getting. This program has contributed and helped a lot around the community, and it is bettering the community by giving us a better future because we are the future. And we need to be more centered in our education instead of going out and having kids. One way that this has helped us also is because we're beating the statistics that are sometimes used against us. And we're making progress into something, a whole new idea that we can do this without having, you know, a lot of obstacles in front of us. The program, like the My Choice programs, is a very, very important program, and it plays a very important role in our lives. And that's why it's very important for us to try and get more programs like the My Choice program and for us to remain funded. So it's very important that we have these programs so they can help us in our future and our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Very good. Say your name.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Eddie Martinez. I'm a senior at Manual Arts High School. I started getting involved in My Choice program in 2006 when I transferred from Locke Senior High School. And at Locke Senior High School, we don't have a clinic over there, and it's a big difference when you come to Manual Arts because I saw a big difference in the way that many kids in my school, in Locke Senior High School, have a lot of kids, or they're pregnant, or stuff like that. And when I came to Manual Arts, it decreased, and it seemed a big difference. And I noticed that, it's because they were educated on how to prevent teen pregnancy, STDs, and all that stuff that is really hurting our population as teens. Because many of us don't really want babies at this time, or we're not ready, and we just want to get more education. And My Choice program, it's a really big, helpful program in our school, Manual Arts. And just hopefully it stays up and it keeps getting funded.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and these are wise words from these young people. So I appreciate the fact that all of you came down today to share that with us. Thank you very much. Let's give them a big hand.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. We are awaiting some of our additional council members for presentation, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Weisar. We also are awaiting a quorum, so if we could ask them and their staffs to send them down, and also Ms. Han, who will allow us to have a quorum and begin to have this meeting. It is now 10:30. We still do not have a quorum. If I could ask Ms. Hahn, Mr. Weisar, or Mr. Garcetti to make their way here to the city council chambers. If not, we will have to entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. We will be able to continue one presentation. Ms. Perry will present a proclamation in absence of Mr. Garcetti. Thank you, Ms. Perry.
Everybody got their?
Yeah.
Is this everybody? Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pinch hitting for our council president, who should be here momentarily. He's surveying some of the damage in Griffith Park. We're here to recognize two fine individuals today, Cecil Nungary and Mark J. Robertson, Sr. They were originally appointed by then-city council president Alex Padilla to the Board of Commissioners of the Industrial Development Authority in January 2004, and they have served with distinction through February of 2007. Through their leadership, Cecil and Mark have guided the Industrial Development Authority through the issuance of more than $863 million in bond financings on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, manufacturers, empowerment zone businesses, and nonprofit organizations. They have helped to bring businesses to Los Angeles and create jobs for thousands of Angelenos. Cecil and Mark's work with the IDA has helped to reduce neighborhood blight, improve access to goods and services, and has made Los Angeles more socially responsible and business friendly. Cecil chaired the marketing committee and brought innovative ideas to market the IDA. These ideas have expanded the use of Industrial Development Authority resources and have safeguarded the public interest through fiscally prudent practices. Mark chaired the legislative committee and guided the Industrial Development Authority through the passage of important legislation. His leadership has expanded the use of IDA resources and has made our products more beneficial to the citizens of Los Angeles. Both have always served with distinction, grace, dignity, extraordinary competency, and a deep commitment to the City of Los Angeles. So on behalf of Council President Eric Garcetti and the entire Los Angeles City Council, I stand here to commend and to thank both Cecil Nungary and Mark J. Robertson, Sr., for their exceptional public service on behalf of the city and all of its residents. Can we please give them a big hand?
Thank you, Councilmember Perry and the entire city council. I really appreciate the opportunity to have served this city that I was born and raised in. And on behalf of the company that allowed me to volunteer my time, Pacific Coast Regional Small Business Development Corporation, we've been located for the last 30 years in Council District 10, soon to move to Council District 8 by virtue of our having purchased an office building at the corner of 43rd and Western. So again, thank you for the opportunity to serve, and hopefully I'll be able to serve in another capacity in the future. Thank you.
I'd also like to thank Alex Padilla, now state senator, for the appointment as well as the city council. Also want to recognize the staff because we all know that a lot of the heavy lifting that goes on is actually connected by the staff. And having worked with them and understanding that we're all asked to do more with less, they really exemplified that. And I just wanted to recognize them. And once again, thank you for allowing me to participate in the process within city government, and thank you once again.
Thank you so very much, Ms. Perry. I know Mr. Smith and Mr. Rosendahl are also going to pitch it. I'd like to acknowledge them for the next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President. We are joined today by a distinguished delegation from our United States Military Reservists and Major General Gravitt, who has been here before. And we appreciate him coming back to make a special presentation to the City of Los Angeles for its support of our veterans in service and our reservists in service. Major, General?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. It's my honor to be here and once more to appear before the council. As you recall, a few weeks ago, we were here and we presented individual citations to each council person, thanking them for their support in their district, for all the military reservists in their district. And those are individual awards, and it was called a Seven Seals Awards. We're back once more this morning, and this morning, we're here to present an award for the entire city government, and that's a Pro Patria Award. A Pro Patria means for country. A few years ago, the city signed a statement of support for the military reservists acknowledging their support for all the military reservists and their family. It's called a five-star award, and I'm going to have my deputy, Colonel Retired, U.S. Marine Corps Retired, Larry Gonzalez, to read that award.
Thank you, sir. The statement of support for the Garden Reserve to the city and the City of Los Angeles. We recognize that the National Garden Reserve are essential to the strength of our nation and the well-being of our communities. In the highest American tradition, the patriotic men and women of the Garden Reserve serve voluntarily in an honorable and vital profession. They train to respond to their community and their country in time of need. They deserve the support of every segment of our society. If these volunteer forces are to continue to serve our nation, increased public understanding is required and essential role of the Garden Reserve in preserving our national security. Therefore, we, that is the City of Los Angeles, join other employers in pledging that, one, employment will not be denied because of service to the Garden Reserve; two, employee job and career opportunities will not be limited or reduced because of service in the Garden Reserve; three, employees will be granted leaves of absence for military service in the Garden Reserve consistent with the existing laws; and four, this agreement and its resultant policies will be made known throughout our organization. It is, this is the highest award that can be received by any entity in the country. And I'm pleased to have grown up in the city and retired as a Los Angeles School District employee in the city, and we've always been consistent with these policies. So this is a reminder of what has already been signed. Thank you, sir.
And the award we're here to present today, the City of Los Angeles has gone above and beyond since signing that document about three years ago. Now, I'm here to present the Pro Patria Award, which is the highest award that the State Committee of Employment Support and Garden Reserve actually can present. And it's an eagle emblazoned on a base of granite, and it says, "ESR 2007, Employer Support to the Garden Reserve, Award of Pro Patria to the City of Los Angeles, presented on behalf of the men and women of America's reserve force for outstanding service to the nation, to national defense through continuous support of the National Guard and Reserve." So I make this presentation to the entire city government, and accepting would be Councilman Rosenthal.
Actually, we should share it together, Mr. Smith and I, being the veterans here on the council, on behalf of really the city, the previous mayor, Mayor Hahn, Mayor Villagosa, and the city council here for taking leadership for the National Guard and the Army Reserve. This war in Iraq and Afghanistan have put a tremendous responsibility on the members of this branch of the military. We used to see it as a weekend thing and a summer camp thing, but as these wars became what they became, they have taken on tremendous responsibility. The general didn't mention, the admiral didn't mention that he was called off of his job, put on active duty, and sent to Iraq. And the people behind me have been brought into the military, two of them here are police officers, where are the police officers? Right here, from our LAPD, who were called into active duty. Give them all a round of applause. And on behalf of my colleagues on the council, it is a great honor for us to accept this honor, but the real honor belongs to all of those folks behind me and all those in uniform right now in harm's way, serving our great nation in both Iraq and Afghanistan. Thank you so much for doing what you're doing. That's what it's about. Yes, please.
Thank you.
Glad to introduce my military colleagues that are here. First of all, we have Rear Admiral Mike Shatinsky, Captain Mark Davidson, Senior Marshal Sergeant Danielle Banks, Sergeant Walker, and Sergeant Choi. Glad to have the admiral make some remarks.
Thank you. On behalf of the United States Navy, I'm pleased to have this opportunity to recognize the City of Los Angeles. Let me express my deepest gratitude to all of you for supporting your military's Guard and Reserve employees. From the birth of our country to today, it's been the citizen soldiers that have made our nation great. Whatever disagreements exist over the war in Iraq, we are all united in our admiration for the men and women serving our nations overseas and in this country in these challenging times. Thank you so much for believing in them. This is a tough time for our service members and especially their families. I can assure you that your help, your understanding, are very important. You value these citizen soldiers and know they're worth more than retaining. You've set the standard for support of the Garden Reserve as recognized by this Pro Patria Award, and thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Madam President. If I could just say, this council took an extraordinary action a couple of years ago, not just to conform to the federal law that we have to allow our reservists to go, but to say that we're going to make sure that they are not damaged within their service, that they would not lose their benefits, their salaries, and they would not be damaged, their families would not be damaged by their service. Unfortunately, you hear too many stories about reservists that are called up, go to Iraq, come home to bankruptcies, to their families losing their homes because their employers do not fully support them. This city said, "We are not going to be one of those employers." We recognize that we have some 40 or 50 employees currently serving in reserve forward units in Iraq, and that we would not damage their life, damage their families, for their willingness to serve the people of the United States of America. And so I'm very proud, on behalf of the city council, accept this award. We made a conscious decision to take care of our people, and we're going to follow through that however long it takes. So God bless those who have gone. And just to report, as a proud father, you can see the star on the flag on my desk. My son entered the Gulf of Aden right off the Iranian waters in Yemen just a week ago. And so I feel very strongly about this. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much, both of you.
And may Los Angeles be the model for the rest of the cities and the nation to take care of their National Guard and their folks who are in war right now in Iraq and Afghanistan. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alacon Cardenas, Gruel Hahn, Weisar Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. Eleven members present in a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Hahn moves. Mr. Alacon seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Those will be approved.
Madam President, would you like to take public comment at this time?
I'd actually like to run through the agenda first, then we will go back to presentations.
Okay. Items nine and 10 are continued for May 16th. There is a request.
Those items will be continued to May 16th.
First group of items are items noted for public hearing, and that is items one through eight.
Are there any specials, colleagues, on items one through eight? If not, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Next are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items 14... Next are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items fourteen through twenty-three, ten votes are required for consideration. Oh, I'm sorry.
Items nine through thirteen, I think, which public hearings have been held.
Oh, I'm sorry. Items nine through thirteen are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay. Any specials, colleagues, on items nine through thirteen? Yes, Mr.? No? Okay. If there are no specials on nine through thirteen, Madam Clerk, if you could, and nine and ten have already been continued, so it'll be eleven through thirteen. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next items?
Next are items fourteen to twenty-three, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. And there are cards on items twenty, twenty-one, and a possible substitute motion on twenty-three.
And twenty-four actually has cards as well?
Yes, twenty-four.
Any specials on this? Is there a substitute motion, item twenty-three? Yes. Okay, we will hold that on the table. Or has it already been distributed? No, I don't think it's been distributed. We will hold it on the table, item twenty-three. We held on the table. Mr. Alacon?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-one, okay. That's, yes, we threw a card. So colleagues, right now, we have items twenty, twenty-one, twenty-three, and twenty-four, which are called special. The remainder of the items are now before you. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Those items have been approved. Next item?
Madam President, I understand that there's a special item that is being worked on at this moment?
Not ready yet? Okay. Okay. Well, while we're figuring that out, what we will do is go back to presentations and acknowledge, yes, Mr. Alacon?
I'd like to have item thirteen reconsidered and sent back to committee.
Item thirteen to be reconsidered and sent back to committee?
Just to report.
Okay. Any opposition to that? If not, we'll open the roll on reconsideration on item number thirteen. Close the roll, tabulate the votes. That item is reconsidered and will be referred back to committee. Thank you. Like to now acknowledge Mr. Weisar for our next presentation.
Thank you, Madam President, and colleagues in public. I'm really thrilled and happy to have with me today some of the winners of the Third Annual Highland Park Beautiful Poster Contest we have with us here today. Not only some great artists, but young people who have learned early in their lives the importance of having a cleaner, greener, and safer community. These kids were the winners who worked hard through their art to show how they can have a better community in Highland Park. Along with council, my colleague, council member Ed Reyes, we wanted to highlight and encourage these young people to continue doing what they're doing. And we have with us some very talented young boys and girls. If you have a chance, please do come see their artwork later on today. Some of my colleagues in council have some great ideas about what to do in their districts. So with that, let me first welcome our first-place elementary school winner, Dion Guan. Dion?
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
We also have Christina Hemming, the second-place elementary school winner. Christina? Also with us is Priscilla Hernandez, the third-place elementary school winner. Priscilla? We also have Amy Aldana, honorable mention, elementary school winner. Amy? Sekoya Salazar, second-place middle school winner. Sekoya? Miriam Bribska, honorable mention, middle school winner. Did I pronounce that correctly? And they wanted to test me to see if I could pronounce it correctly. Anna Bribska, first-place high school winner. Thank you very much. I also want to thank the following organizations who helped sponsor this contest. They are LA Bridges, Kiwanis Club, the Hathaway Youth Leadership Council, the Historic Highland Park Neighborhood Council, and the Luther Burbank Builders Club. At this time, I'd like to ask Dion Guan, who was this year's grand prize winner, to please come up and share a few words with us.
I just want to thank everyone, and I'm very grateful for this award.
Very well said. And thank you, Henry Kiefer, who is not only with a number of these groups here. You're involved in a number of community events here, so thank you for helping with us with this today. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. Let's keep encouraging our young people to think about how we could all contribute back to our community that starts at a very young age. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar. Colleagues, we will now go to our public comment portion of our city council meeting. I will ask in a moment the following individuals to please come forward. Daniel Gus, followed by Rochelle Coretts, followed by Nicholas Napolitano, followed by Lydia Ponse. Yes, good morning. Daniel?
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning. A few days ago, Councilmember Alarcon talked about how his constituents were being cheated out of the LA River Project and the benefits of it. I'm concerned that the City of Los Angeles has $3 million of Prop F money, and the animal shelter in Councilmember's district still doesn't have its spay-neuter clinic or veterinarian to staff it. I'm concerned that Councilmember Weiss and Zine have a new shelter opening in their district, but the spay-neuter clinic isn't open, and the spay-neuter clinic isn't staffed there. I'm concerned that the North Central Animal Shelter opened in November 2006, and its spay-neuter clinic is closed. I'm concerned that Councilmembers Hahn and Rosendahl have new clinics coming in, have new shelters coming in their area, and the spay-neuter clinics are not open. I want Ed Boggs to do the job he was hired to do. He's been here for a year and a half and has $3 million of Prop F money, but councilmembers, your constituents are being cheated out of the services you paid for. Mr. Boggs is here today, and I'd like you to ask him why the spay-neuter clinics in all of these shelters are closed, and what he plans to do to get veterinarians to hire them. The only thing Mr. Boggs has come up with is an unaccredited school that's 50 miles away from the City of Los Angeles. They've never graduated a single veterinarian student, and that's not the answer. The shelters are teeming with animals, and Mr. Boggs has claimed that the city has gone no-kill for the month of March, but he's failed to mention that the City of Los Angeles killed 650 animals in March. Councilmember Smith, your new shelter is opening in about a month, but there's no spay-neuter clinic open, and there's no veterinarian to staff it. So we can talk all we want about item twenty-four later today, but I'm concerned that we have all these shelters, Mr. Boggs has $3 million of Prop F money, and we don't have the clinics or the veterinarians to staff them. Please ask him to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Rochelle Coretts?
Thank you. Yes, good morning to everybody. My name is Rochelle Corres. I addressed this council for the first time last Friday in Van Nuys. I was very nervous then, and I still am. I want to be clear that today I am expressing my views only, not necessarily those of my neighbors. I was never involved in city affairs until last May, when, along with others, I received notice of a hearing to construct a four-story condominium in our quiet, predominantly one-story neighborhood. It was then that I began a new adventure with the help of a few knowledgeable people who truly empowered me. It has been a tremendous journey so far, and I've learned so much about how my city government operates. I have become aware of the fact that we do not have a perfect system, that it is a work in progress, but it is so reassuring to know that each and every voice is welcome to participate. The problem I am now having is that my voice seems to be falling on deaf ears. In the past few months, I have been actively working to set up a meeting with Councilmember Wesson to come and meet with my neighbors to discuss our options and strategies so that we may have a collective voice in the future development of our community. We believe that possibly establishing a design review committee would be an excellent way to make sure that the community plans are taken seriously and not just viewed as a wish list. Last Friday, I was promised this meeting by his planning deputy, Andrew Westall. I was so elated that I felt the need to publicly thank Mr. Wesson for acquiescing to this meeting. I did what a friend who has been around City Hall much longer than me said I should never do, quote, "performance for promises." Well, I bet you can guess what happened. The meeting got canceled, and no one is answering my email regarding rescheduling. So I stand before you today, one week after praising Mr. Wesson, to express my profound disappointment with how his staff handles his constituents. Mr. Wesson may have no knowledge of this, but he still must be held accountable for his actions of those working for him. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Napolitano?
I come today speaking as a fourth-generation American citizen who was shocked beyond belief when I witnessed LAPD opened fire with not-lethal projectile weapons against children, women, men, the elderly, and the homeless. There was absolutely no discrimination in who was shot at. In trying to flee and keep the peace, and in addition, trying to get my fellow community members to safety, I was shot in the upper-left portion of my back with rubber bullets. I have these two photos to detail what occurred. There was no warning to disperse on the southeast end of MacArthur Park where I was. There were women and children, and people were hurt for no reason. Chief Bratton said that missiles were thrown. There was no such missile thrown. There were a couple of eight-ounce empty water bottles that were thrown. This all started when a couple of motorcycle officers ran into peaceful Aztec dancers. There was no warning for them to disperse or leave the street. I come here with great hope that something will be done about this that will be beyond the norm. This cannot continue. This was a march for immigrants' rights and peace, and it descended into a melee because of the tactics used by LAPD. In closing, I want to also address that the media has reported that anarchists were the ones who caused this. This is not true. In fact, there were maybe ten anarchists, and they were, in fact, the ones trying to keep the peace. I do sincerely hope that change will occur. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lydia Ponse. After Lydia Ponse, we'll be going out to the San Fernando Valley.
Lydia Ponse, Venice. As I approached the park, there were four or five media helicopters. By the time I parked my car, there was one LAPD helicopter making an inaudible, incomplete announcement at the west, south, at the southwest, yeah, southwest side of the park. Police started shooting randomly, and there were children of all ages. Once I met up with everyone up at the northwest side of the park, where moms had their children up on their tippy toes, trying to run toward safety away from the LAPD who were firing into the crowd. I helped a family to safety who had simply been feeding the pigeons by the water, and there was not one announcement made on the Life PA from the organizers or the police. When I returned to the southwest side, there were two police officers. For every two police officers, there was one police officer with a gun in between them, and I asked where the city resources for bullhorns to announce simply, to have people who are attending this event be properly directed and respected, would have truly had a day without incident. My three minutes are to serve you as a reminder, and especially to the mayor, that he should not have been out of town, and that his poor planning on his activities do not sit well with me, and I say shame to the mayor. And I want to remind all of you that, as you talk and don't listen to what I'm saying, as I, last time I checked, that all of you work for us, and that all these investigations, as they occur, need to yield, to change in the policies to better serve and protect the community, which I am a part of, because as you're planning your lunches, your weekend, or whatever it is that you're doing, perhaps, you could really, truly take a seat and listen to the general public statements. Shame on all of you for not listening and taking your seats and doing your job.
Now go out to the San Fernando Valley to Marlene Goodman, followed by Ellen Little. Good morning, Marlene.
Yes, good morning. This is a public comment, but it's about your support of 1634. And as the public, I didn't know if I would have enough time to speak to the issue later. So I just wanted to say that I am representing senior citizens for humane legislation and education, the directors of animal welfare that serve our neighborhood councils, and Stray Cat Alliance. And although I'm standing here alone, I am representing hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of people that live in the City of Los Angeles who are praying for a change for what is happening to thousands of animals every year in the city and state. And I'll speak on some issues when I come back. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Thank you, Ms. Little.
Ellen Little.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm a resident of Studio City, and I'm just like, in this preliminary part of the agenda, to thank Councilmember Alarcon for introducing this motion to support an ordinance for mandatory spaying and neutering, consistent with the provisions of AB 1634. I'm here to support this motion. Thank you. Can I speak later, then? Thank you.
Next public comment speaker here is Zumadog, followed by Arnold Sacks, followed by Michael Carrion.
Yes, microphone. Yes, thank you, City Council. Time for the Zumadog Report for Friday, May 11, 2007. You can read more on mayor sam.blogspot.com. First of all, I'd like to say, in case the people don't know, that a federal jury awarded a $1 million agreement, they awarded $1 million to a female LAPD because of sexual discrimination and hostile work environment at LAPD. That just cost the taxpayers a million dollars. Nobody reported it in the media. I had to get them a back computer, and it came up in the search. So I'd like to say that we got a lot, Garagos and Garagos is next, y'all. Garagos and Garagos has filed in federal court because somebody was locked up for two months without DNA being run into, got him exonerated. So we got a problem with too many lawsuits in the city that are causing the taxpayers too much money. I've asked the mayor to please have the all-city departments get together for a training and education seminar, and we need more training and education of all city employees as they come on the job, because laws are constantly changing, new rules are constantly being made, and you have new employees constantly being added to the system, and you're putting them out there on the streets to try to enforce things, and they have no knowledge. So we need more education, because a lot of these frivolous lawsuits cost millions and millions of dollars, could easily be avoided in the Civil Department. Thank you very much for that. And I'd like to say, Dirt Burnell, there has been a complaint filed with the Building and Safety Department because the Xenon, Michael Xenon of Xenon Development, has, they say that he has intentfully deceived the city and provided fraudulent information to try to get permits, because you got a dirt road there that they're trying to pretend's a street. is a street, and they're trying to build six houses there, and they transfer property back and forth because they tried to avoid an environmental impact statement by doing that, because it looked like it was less than three houses, and you're not supposed to be doing that. And so now there's been... And so we've got these... We've also got this developer... Here's what's going to be happening in the city, and I'm glad Eric Garcetti just walked into the room, because there's something known as ordinance twelve dot ninety-five-two. That's the vacancy rates you've been hearing Zuma Dogg and Noel Weiss talk about for so much. And so now what's happening is the local planning commissions, like the West Los Angeles and the ones in Eric Garcetti, the local commissions are now saying, "No, we're putting the smackdown on these vacancy rates and the Ellis Acts and all these things." So we're saying no to these condo conversions. However, now what the developers are doing, and Michael Xenon has one in Rosendahl's district, and Garcetti has a development project where the community said no to, they're appealing to City Council now and saying, "We know that all the public and all the committees and everybody said no, but please, will you do it anyway? Just screw the public. Just do it anyway, because you know I support you." So it's going to be... The challenge is now on, because now it's going to be up to you guys. We're going to see exactly what's up, y'all, whether you're going to be doing what you say, or whether you're just in the back pockets of developers, because now it's all going to be coming to y'all for a appeal.
Mr. Zuma Dogg, you've got a little bit extra time, because we had not put... They had not pushed the button for your time, so your time is now up.
Oh, but okay. Well, I was timing it off of this, so I'd just like to say, you got to give it to me. I'm sorry you forgot, but I'd like to say, "Please stop deceiving the facts of this."
Thank you very much. Arnold Sacks. Mr. Sacks. Mr. Sacks will be followed by Michael Carrion, Candido Merez, and Noel Weiss.
I haven't started. The clock is running. Good morning, councilmembers. A few things I'd like to touch on here. Yesterday... A couple days ago, there was a bomb scare. I'd like to congratulate the bomb-sniffing dogs for not finding the package that was left at Union Station, but losing the suitcase to a transient during a training exercise is so totally unacceptable. Hopefully, this person will come forward, and instead of being prosecuted, this highly-trained transient will allow his expertise and his ability to carry out this covert act will be documented and studied by the appropriate parties. Also, I'd like to talk about congratulating the new airport director, but I would suggest that she please forget about the Green Line extension, as MTA Board does not support the foundation... The formation of a construction authority. Along that vein, MTA is holding fare increases throughout this month. Please contact your council members or your church leaders or have your voice heard somehow, some way, because they want to account for every penny that's coming in, but nobody's accounting for all the dollars that are being spent. And then finally, today, the council offered a proclamation in support of the area's reservists. I would ask for a moratorium on the council rules regarding non-votes as acceptable procedure. I think it's very hypocritical for the council to allow this to continue as long as America's servicemen are in harm's way. The city council should at least spend the time to sit and vote on their pending legislation instead of having a non-vote count. It's very, very disrespectful to anybody serving overseas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael Carrion. Mr. Carrion?
Yes, my name is Michael Carrion, and I've got a few questions. If I can get your attention, please. You know what? This is one of the reasons why MacArthur Park happened. People come here to talk to you guys, and your personal conversations are more important. Public opinion doesn't mean anything in this forum, so I want to talk to the public. You know why MacArthur Park happened? Because nobody that sits in this horseshoe cares, okay? You have the ability to do something about that. Who here was surprised when Ronnie King got beat up? Nobody that I spoke to was. If you ran from LAPD, you got beat up. The consent decree is in effect. What good does it do? I'm not saying the whole police department is bad, but if you've got bad apples inside a basket, you take them out. If not, the whole basket goes bad. What we need is more training, a better quality of training, not more officers. If you trained the officers properly, this wouldn't happen. But what we do is we put them out there with the old training of suppression, and that's all they know. They can do a better job if you give them the benefit of the doubt. Ninety percent of this police department is great, but if you leave them with the other ten percent, they're going to ruin a whole lot more. That's what I have to say on that issue. I've come here several times, speaking for my community. If the council people feel that I'm being a little too abrupt about it, or I'm stepping on toes or hurting feelings, I don't apologize for what I say. This is not a certain councilman or council district that I'm speaking about. I'm speaking about the city in whole. The city, the way it works, is all screwed up. You can't get anything done around here without a bureaucracy of wait till six months from now. I didn't get your email. I didn't get this. I'm too busy out to lunch. Gentlemen, you guys got... Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize. We have to do something about this. You here have an opportunity to do something about it.
Thank you very much.
Take advantage.
Candido Merez, followed by Noel Weiss.
Good morning, Madam President. Councilmembers, I want to talk about something nice. I've been gone for a week, and under the weather, I want to talk about what happened last Sunday in the twelfth district, Citrix Sunday, where we collected fruits for those individuals who cannot afford them. Mr. Smith, I hope this goes citywide, because I know from San Pedro to Chasworth, there are individuals and seniors and kids that need that good fruit. Mrs. Han, you saved a ballpark this week. You know, if you save one child in San Pedro, you're saving a child in the rest of the city. It's absolutely essential, and business still is going to flourish in your district. So again, congratulations. Let's talk about those good things that are happening in our city. Mr. Weezer, to have all those children here today and showing that they're involved in our environment, that's fantastic, sir. I hope we see more of that. Ms. Gruel, I want to congratulate you. We need another good city controller. I'm not much of an individual in my community, but I'll work my bones to get you elected, and I hope that you'll call upon me. I look forward to working with you. Lastly, I'd like to talk about LAPD. One of the good things that happened this last few days, and maybe some people don't want to hear about it, but nineteen officers were honored for serving this community beyond the call of duty. We don't hear about those things. Last week, we talked about the bike patrol who were working with the homeless in Van Nuys and the great things they're accomplishing there. We talked about the police officers who are serving in Iraq. And the things that happened on May first at MacArthur Park, I'm not going to say they didn't happen. For those of you who know, I'm not anybody's puppet. I fought DWP. But can you imagine if we took twenty-five-thousand people that were there for the demonstration, and we took them into their communities, and we started going after the gangs? Twenty-five-thousand people going against the gangs. Can you imagine that? We asked nine-thousand police officers to do that, but can you imagine if we got the people of this great city to finally say enough with gangs? I think we'd be a greater city. I still believe that we're the greatest city and the greatest country in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss? Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say something?
Thank you, councilmembers.
Mr. Weiss, could you hold on just one second, and we'll start your clock. Mr. City Attorney?
Just a reminder that the discussion should be directed to council as a whole. If you want to talk about actions of individual councilmembers, talk about them in the third person, please. Will do. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. In the spirit of Candy's remarks, I just wanted to throw in a positive for citizen involvement in government, specifically on the planning commission level. I know Mr. Wesson has been concerned, and Mr. Garcetti has been concerned, about twelve-ninety-five-point-two in terms of tenant conversions, trying to get the staff to move along. But what is happening is the people are moving along, and I don't know who's going to be watching this, but I think Cleo Tagel over in Edge Cliff Drive deserves a great deal of congratulations, because the East Valley Planning Commission, through her efforts, and she's not a lawyer, she's a very strong advocate, however, but through her efforts, the East Valley Planning Commission has, for the first time, really a landmark decision, granted the appeal of the tenants in denying a conversion in this situation. So now what we have is, again, citizen action through our democracy. And I've just been told, I checked with Peter Gutierrez, maybe I can quote him, hopefully he won't... He'll still continue to talk to me. But Peter said that the city attorney is now actually going to enforce the ordinance when it's challenged in court, if, in fact, it is challenged in court. So what we're going to have is now, and I assume Mr. Garcetti will support it when it gets to council, so we are going to have a situation where we're moving the ball forward, finally, but it's really as a result of citizen action. And I think whether it's gang issues, whether it's school issues, whatever it is, to the extent that we can reach down, get out to the community, as opposed to talking to ourselves here in city council, I think that we would be better off. So I just wanted to let the people out there know that your time and your effort does pay off in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. That closes our public comment. I'd like to now acknowledge my colleague, Mr. Garcetti, for our final presentation.
And I'm going to ask a few guests to join us here at the podium. Come on over, guys. And I apologize, this morning, I was with the governor and the mayor and Councilmember Labonge wrapping things up over in Griffith Park. And again, we want to thank the incredible firefighters and the coordinated effort. Many of them just got off that fire and are already over at the fires that is now at Catalina. And I know that in San Pedro High School, it's been opened up as an emergency shelter and some other things. I also am sorry I missed the employee... The guard presentation, the reserve presentation. I really want to thank everybody and congratulate Los Angeles for being such a great employer for our men and women who serve in the reserves and in the guard. But we are here because it's my great pleasure to introduce to you Lily Kachikis, who is a young lady we are very excited about honoring today. She is right over here. We've asked Lily and her family and friends to come and join us today in council chambers to publicly acknowledge the efforts of a young lady who took it upon herself to start a huge endeavor, one that was entailed organizing a fundraiser for an organization to address an issue that she felt very close to her heart. Now Lily is six years old and is currently in elementary school, one of the youngest people we've honored here probably this year. But she's like any other child her age. It's active and inquisitive and enjoys playing with her friends. But when the L.A. Youth Network, a Los Angeles-based organization dedicated to reducing youth homelessness, which is a population sometimes overlooked, reached out, Lily jumped into action. The Los Angeles Youth Network tells youth between the ages of twelve and seventeen that they have a home and a place in society, and that they are just as deserving as any other young person out there. It's a nonprofit organization dealing and struggling with issues of budgets and resources so they can continue their outreach efforts, and we've seen what impact they've had in Hollywood and throughout our city, touching youth that live on the streets. And Lily said, you know, "As a young person, as a young lady, I need to help my own. I need to help the young people here in Los Angeles." And when they came knocking on the Kachikis' door, Lily heard them loud and clear and felt that she could contribute to this huge effort of ending youth homelessness in our city. So with the help of her mom, Michelle Marks, who equally deserves this honor, Lily began a fundraising effort that started when Lily painted a picture of her mom's friend's pet. And from there, Lily began to gather pictures of pets from her mother's coworkers and began to paint them. And Lily, could we show one of these paintings right here?
That's for me.
Oh, this is for me? Wow. Well, you can see... She's going to present this in a second, but you can see this amazing and beautiful art that she's made here. We'll have her talk about it in just one second. Maybe we can get the handheld microphone, since the podium's a little high, if somebody could help us with that. She began to paint pictures of other of her mother's coworkers' pets, and when she was all done, she would sell the paintings to her mother's coworkers, and they became a huge hit. So not only are we honoring somebody here for her heart, but also for the birth of a great artist in our city. And in a matter of weeks, Lily had collected over two-hundred dollars that she had raised dollar for dollar. Through her mother's guidance and education on what it means to give, Lily very humbly handed the funds to the L.A. Youth Network. And there's something else that I really want to highlight, thank you, from Lily's effort and example. This has been an effort that has touched and motivated a countless number of people. So when she has... What she has done is inspired others to continue to help and address the issue of youth homelessness, and to believe that one person can make a difference. I happened to find out about Lily's work with the Los Angeles Youth Network through Charlie Armstrong, our friend who's the president of Paramount Studios, and who was equally moved and motivated by this, and shared Lily's story with my office. And from there, the story has circulated throughout the community and has made a really... Has had a heartfelt impact, especially on the L.A. Youth Network. And to me, the biggest impact of this is that this story tells people that anyone, no matter how big, how small, how old, how young you are, that you have the capacity to go out there and do something to improve conditions that our less fortunate neighbors face. This is a story of compassion that a little girl felt towards her neighbors and youth who have been disempowered. And through your actions, Lily, you're telling everybody, all of us, but more importantly, the youth out there, that there are loving people in the city that are ready and able to help give back and get these young people on their feet. So I'm very humbled by your work, Lily, and Michelle, and I want to present our sincere appreciation for your creativity, your insight, and your compassion. And we wanted to present to Lily Kachikis, a six-year-old from Los Angeles, this great certificate of congratulations for the amazing work you've done. It's a little bit of our art to thank you for your art. Congratulations. Tell us why you decided to do what you did.
Because I thought it was fun.
That's a good reason. And you wanted to help people who are on the street? That's great.
Yes.
And if people are interested in getting their pets painted, are you available?
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you, Lily. Let's give Lily a round of applause. And Michelle, would you like to say anything?
Let's say a little something, too. We can see where Lily gets her shyness from. I just wanted to tell you about the painting that she did. Since we don't think that you have a pet, she did a painting of Silver Lake.
Oh, that's great.
Because we know that...
Oh, wow.
This is the dog park, Silver Lake.
Absolutely, yep.
And then the recent fires, which we hope are over.
That's amazing. Well, thank you. Yeah, we did have a cat until recently, so we don't have anything to paint right now, but thank you. And this is a picture of the recent fires also, as well as the beautiful Silver Lake Meadow and Reservoir. And is this little turtle right here?
It's a Silver Lake monster.
It's a Silver Lake monster, so we're going to be looking out there. You might have Reggie, but we're going to have the Silver Lake monster. Thank you so much, Lily. Thank you, Michelle. Congratulations, and thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I'd like to now acknowledge Mr. Parks. We were go-to item number... Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson, I apologize. Mr. Wesson. Mr. Garcetti?
Mr. Garcetti, Lily, I have a photograph of my four dogs that are up in my office. Do you think you could paint me a portrait of my four puppies if I allowed you to maybe take that photograph home and work on it? You think you could? How much... What's the most amount of money that you've received for one of your works of art?
Now that we're in this illustrious building, whatever you would be willing to...
No, I want to be the highest. What was the most she sold?
The most was thirty dollars.
Okay, fifty bucks. Fifty bucks. So I'm in room four-thirty in my private office, are my four little dogs, Jack, Homer, Peabody, and Tiffany, in a beautiful thing. And if Lily could paint that for me, I'd be honored to hang that somewhere, maybe in my other office. So if you could go upstairs and take a gander at that, and thank you so much, Lily.
I want to catch your dogs also, because she's a big fan of puppies.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. Appreciate that challenge. Mr. Parks, before we get to item twenty-one, we're going to reconsider, Madam Clerk, those items, our ordinances. We do have twelve members present.
Okay.
Madam Clerk?
Okay, we're going to re... Through eight, the ordinances and items fourteen through eighteen.
Okay.
First is to reconsider.
We'll vote to reconsider. Madam Clerk, open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Okay. That item is... Those items are now before us again. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much, those items, and approve. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to ask Detective Youngman from LAPD South Bureau of Homicide to come up, also Officer Gloria Covington, who is the aunt of our victim and will be bringing the family members up. the family members up. And basically today, we're asking for a $50,000 reward for a homicide that occurred Wednesday, November the 8th, 2006, involving a 19-year-old by the name of Jose Romero Garcia. And let me ask Detective Mann to give us overview of what the circumstances were on that case and then also ask Officer Covington in behalf of the family to make a personal plea for information on this case.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Councilman Parks and members of City Council for hearing our request. On Wednesday, November 8th, 2006, Jose Romero Garcia, male Hispanic, 19-years-old, was parked in his vehicle in front of 2929 South Palm Grove Avenue in the city of L.A. At the time he was sitting in his vehicle, two suspects approached him. One of them pulled out a handgun, shot him multiple times. Victim Jose was injured, however, he was able to flee in his vehicle, short distance, until he collided with another vehicle. Suspect ran from the location. By the time the fire, L.A. FD Fire Paramedics arrived, they transported him to UCLA Medical Center where he was succumbed to his injuries and pronounced dead. At this time, my partner John Richardson and I have been working on this case from day one. We've interviewed numerous witnesses and countless motives for this homicide. However, we've come to a end where we cannot go on any further. With the help of the victim's family, his mom, Nancy, and his father, Romero, his cousin, Patricia, and of course, his aunt Gloria Covington, who is also a police officer, we were able to identify many people who were able to help us, but we came to an end. And we are here before you to plead and to request for this motion to pass through City Council for a reward of $50,000. And I believe the reward will help maybe some witnesses to come forward who were, who were there, who were present and who may have been able to see the suspects who committed this horrendous crime. Thank you.
And Officer Covington, maybe we could bring that photo up a little closer so that the TV cameras can also see.
As you can see, this has been extremely hard for our family. We, nobody ever expects to lose someone that's so very near and dear to them. It's made it even harder for us to accept the circumstances, especially now that it's come to an end. Nobody, everyone ever deserves to, to die this way. We've come as a special, we have a special plea for the, for the public. Someone out there saw something, and if this helps, maybe they can come forward. We, we haven't found closure at all. We're still suffering day to day. We don't know anything. Nothing's ever the same. Without him in our families, the only place we have him is in our hearts and the memories that we do cherish day to day. It's been especially hard for me as I do have to continue with our daily lives, seeing my sister and everyone grief. It hasn't been the same. I know they say that only time heals, heals the pain, but for us, it's the other way around. The more time that we wait, we haven't found any closure. So a special plea to you, to the public, whoever sees this recording, if they know anything, if they could just please come forward on behalf of the family and myself, we beg that of you. We need to find something. Nothing will ever replace Jose. Thank you very much. At this time, his mother would, my sister would like to say a few words in Spanish, if you may allow that, please?
Yes.
Yes, I will give you a microphone so you'll be able to translate for us.
We have, hold on one minute, we're going to get a translator, just a second.
Yeah. Yeah. No. Um, les quiero agradecer por esta oportunidad.
I want to appreciate this opportunity.
Um, quisiera pedirle a toda la comunidad.
I want to ask the community.
Que por favor si saben alguna información.
Please, if you know some information.
Hagan saber a la policía.
Let the police know.
Nosotros sabemos que si hay alguien que miró.
We know that there was someone who saw, who witnessed.
Quiero que por favor no tengan miedo, que hablen a la policía.
I want you to please not to be afraid to talk to the police.
Por favor, toda la comunidad que sepa algo, que haya mirado algo, es lo único que les pido.
Please, to the entire community, if you saw someone, that's the only thing I beg from you.
Por favor, ayúdenme a encontrar alguien.
Please, help me to find someone.
Queremos que mi esposo y toda la familia.
My husband and my entire family.
Encontrar a esas personas que nos han hecho tanto daño.
We went, we want to find this aspect who caused us so much damage.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the family being here and the detectives. And I'd just like to, just for the public, in fact, let me ask the detective, could you give a report back number to the public, how they can reach you?
Yes. You can notify either my partner or I at 213-485-1383.
Okay. And just for the public again, on Wednesday, November the 8th, at 2006, at approximately 5:00 PM, Jose Romero Garcia was fatally shot in front of 2929 Palm Grove Avenue in South Los Angeles. He was sitting in his vehicle when unknown suspects walked up to him and fired into the car. He died as a result of those injuries. We'd like to make sure that, again, the phone number is 213-485-1383 to notify 77 detectives. Thank you very much and thank you to the family.
Thank you.
And I ask for an I vote on the reward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. If we could, Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Thank you very much. Next item? I think it's item number 20.
Next item is item number 20, and it was called Special for Cards.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zuma Dog, item number 20.
Yeah, item number 20, yes, this is the special event fee waivers. And the problem, first of all, I'd like to really congratulate City Council. I'm very happy for the past year, myself and Matt Dowd as well, have been talking about the special event fee waiver abuse that's been happening, where a lot of commercial entities are getting these waivers. I'm seeing a lot now where the event sponsor will reimburse the city, especially like American Idol Live. What a frivolous waste of time, American Idol. So I'm glad to see that if we are doing something like that, the event sponsor shall reimburse. So City Council, give yourself a round of applause for finally doing something about the special event fees. But then it just gets shadier, you dig a little deeper, and here's what I want to warn City Council. I'd like to call City Controller, Lord Chick. Hey, Lord Chick, what's up with the dough? I say we need to have an audit into all nonprofits that come up on these lists, all nonprofits on these special event fees. Every time the city gives money to a nonprofit, I think they first should be vetted with an audit through the city controller, then they can get put on the list to take the money. Because there's a lot of misuse, misappropriation, fraud, waste, and abuse of some of these nonprofit organizations that the city's dealing with. And I've seen some of them come on here, and I've been feeding them into my bat computer, and some of them come up shady, y'all, because you got people sitting on the committees that are wa, making way too much money, taking big salaries, driving big fancy cars, and the money ain't going to where it's supposed to. So it's Friday, y'all, it's a nice day, and I don't even want to talk another 38 seconds. So I'll just say, I want to see an audit of all of these nonprofits that are coming through the city, that they're giving money to, these special event fee waivers, because there's a lot of shady fraud, waste, and abuse. I'm going through my special, I'm going through my computer, bat computer, and I'm checking IRS numbers against things, and stuff ain't coming up right, y'all. Things like schools, for example, they get grant money, and then they own the building also, so they charge themselves rent for the building, but they own it, so they're taking money, double bamboozling, and it ain't coming up on the IRS forms. So don't give money to those kind of nonprofits, y'all. Run an audit, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Next item. I know it was item number 23 we held.
Yes, next item is item 23, and there's a substitute motion and has been distributed.
Okay. Are there any questions or issues on item number 23? The amended motion is before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
That item's been approved. Next item.
Next item is item number 24 on the continuation agenda, and it was called Special for Cards from the public.
Thank you. We do have several cards on this. If I could ask the, excuse me, following individuals, Daniel Gus, followed by Phyllis Doherty, then we will go back out to the San Fernando Valley. I think we'll be given two minutes.
Good morning. The mandatory spay-neuter ordinance is absolutely important. We desperately need that in this city. Please support it. But we also need honesty from Ed Boakes, and Ed Boakes lied directly, sitting here, to Councilman Rosendahl, when he told him that he would be exempt from the spay-neuter ordinance as it read. Mr. Boakes lied, and he didn't tell Councilmember Rosendahl about the breeder's fee and the intact fee of $100 for each and every dog that he bred. Mr. Rosendahl bred three generations of dogs, and even the puppies would be hit with those fees, and Mr. Boakes said that he would be exempt from those fees. Honesty is important as you pass this ordinance. The city needs to provide free, not discounted, spay-neuter services, and Mr. Boakes doesn't have the infrastructure to support this ordinance. In lying to Councilmember Rosendahl about his exemption, he's lying to you about the infrastructure to support it. Right now, ask Mr. Boakes to provide the exact dates and who, which doctors are going to be staffing these spay-neuter clinics. Ed Boakes has had time to write about his religious, sexual, and dating preferences on the website, but he's not had the time to open spay-neuter clinics to support this ordinance. This is a walking sexual harassment lawsuit. We've had them before, and we know that there are going to be more sexual harassment lawsuits. So why is Ed Boakes writing about his religious and sexual preferences when he should be opening the spay-neuter clinics? To give your constituents, Councilmember Hans, constituents can't go to the Harbor Shelter and get free spay-neuter services. Neither can Councilmember Perry's or Reyes's. How are your people going to be able to get these services while Mr. Boakes is wasting his time? Mr. Boakes has lied not just to Councilmember Rosendahl, he's lying that March was a no-kill month and he killed 650 animals. Mr. Boakes failed to provide the infrastructure, and your constituents are not getting the services. May I please finish the sentence, please, Councilmember? Just I just want to finish the sentence.
Finish the sentence, go ahead.
$3 million was given to Mr. Boakes, and he's been here 18 months, and the spay-neuter clinics aren't open. So we desperately need this ordinance.
Thank you.
So how are we going to honor the services to make it work? Please ask him. Thank you for the extra time.
Thank you. Phyllis Doherty is our next speaker.
Phyllis Doherty of the Animal Issues Movement. This is not just a spay-neuter ordinance, it is a quality of life issue for the, both the animals and the residents of Los Angeles, and especially those in the low-income areas where unaltered animals are most frequently the creation, the ones that create the hardships. These are the animals that get out of yards, create traffic accidents, sanitation problems, and produce unwanted offspring that then themselves are out in the street and ultimately in our shelters. Most people would spay and neuter their pets if they realized that the dog packs that endanger them in the streets are mostly caused by unaltered male dogs fighting to mate with in-season females. And most attacks on adults and children in these areas are by unaltered dogs, often in pairs. Cats that breed under houses, and we all get calls for these, and I know your offices do, create households, creating household and community issues regarding parasites, are often those abandoned because they came into heat at three to four months of age. They have, they contribute litters which become strays and are often ill or starving all over the neighborhood. The city of L.A. has appropriated $700,000 per year for spay and neuter, and Mr. Boakes has assured us that the spay and neuter clinics for each shelter will soon be open. Spaying and neutering is a one-time event. The animal only needs one trip to the vet to accomplish the procedure that can improve the health of the animal and certainly the safety of the community. I believe that anyone owning a pet must be prepared to assume responsibility for it. And I also believe that pet owners in Los Angeles will welcome the opportunities that this ordinance will provide for them to take that responsibility.
Well, next go to Van Ayes. Marlene Goodman is our next speaker. Good morning.
Good morning again. And Mr. Gar, Councilmember Garcetti, you said you have no cat. We can certainly assist you in getting as many as you have room for.
Absolutely. With my neighbors, don't worry, there's about 15 in our backyard, too. We share.
Oh, we have to talk about TNR then, but not right now. I'm here to speak for those who have no voice. Companion animals must stop paying for their lives because of human neglect. The killing must stop, and I thank the City Council to be open to providing the laws that'll make that happen. It's also time for the breeders to step up and pay their fair share of business licenses, federal and state, and local taxes. As breeders, they have been profiting for too long, while we taxpayers have been paying their fair share. This has got to change. They have to step up, they have to pay, and they have to stop hiding their income from all of us. I thank you for your time, and I know you're going to move forward in the right direction. Thanks again.
Thank you very much, Marlene. Our next speaker here is Bill Dyer. After that will be Florence Blecker, Bleeker, excuse me.
I'm Bill Dyer with Indefensive Animals. We have begun a campaign called No Kill Now. You see my button? No Kill Now. To accelerate the time it will take for us to reach the day when all shelters will become no-kill. We wish to help the Department of Animal Services to reach this important goal before its time. The spay-neuttering of animals is an integral part of our campaign. When we last discussed this issue in the chambers, your words of concern and compassion were heartfelt and frankly amazing to me. We are very grateful to all of you for your support of this new ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dyer. Florence Bleeker is our next speaker, and then Carol Ruskella.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
At the root of this issue is, is the same issue as the teen pregnancy issue that you discussed earlier. It is responsibility. The solution to both cases is education and incentives. The last time that this issue was discussed in these chambers, you were all told a series of half-truths by Ms. Mancuso, Mr. Boakes, and their colleagues. Facts were omitted and spun right and left. The handout that you have in hand includes the latest version of Assembly Bill 1634, which is being used as the model for Los Angeles. It is fatally flawed with myriad ambiguities and vagaries. The handout also includes a letter from COPS, the California Organization of Police and Sheriffs, joining their colleagues from other California and West Coast law enforcement agencies in strong opposition to this ordinance or this proposal. Also, I have before me, for the record, a letter from the International Association of Assistance Dog Partners, also in opposition to the bill. Last, I would like to read briefly from the testimony of Congressman Charles Stenholm, who spoke on the 8th before the House Agriculture and Subcommittee on Livestock and Poultry, citing repeatedly, thank you, the falsehoods, scare tactics of the people behind this type of ordinance, and also the lack of effectiveness of this type of legislation. Time and time again, this type of law fails and is repealed. Again, I remind you of the lies that were told to you at the last hearing of this ordinance and urge you to read the facts in the booklet that I gave you the last time out and to really do your homework. Thank you.
We'll make sure when the Sergeant-at-Arms has that, when the Sergeant-at-Arms can assist us with, with getting the piece of paper there from the speaker. We'll make sure we get that. If you just step aside, or, thank you. Carol Ruskella?
Shelter and euthanasia figures have been dropping for decades, as much as 80% in some areas. So this tells me that there is no problem to begin with. And what this ordinance will do is create a problem where none existed. Because as a dog trainer, I know that positive reinforcement is the only kind of training that works. It's the only way you learn. Negative reinforcement, which this law would be, create, it will halt a problem, but it won't change it. The positive things in this case are spay and neuter clinics and education, mostly education. Is, is make, that's what made the difference over the last few decades, and that's what will make the difference now. Passing a law isn't going to make any difference. The people who already ignore the law aren't going to step forward now just because you raise the fines or raise the, you know, standards. I've been a dog owner for 40 years. I've never bred a litter, accidentally or otherwise, and I've never neutered or spayed any of my dogs because I don't believe in it for health reasons. And then I hit menopause, and I really don't believe in it. Those hormones are there for a reason. I see it in my dogs. I've been a responsible licensed, you know, I've always paid my fees all along, and I'm being penalized for something that I'm not responsible for. That's the other side of the coin, but basically I want to say, there is no problem, there's no need for the law. Thank you.
Can Mathu is our next speaker. Khan Matu is our next speaker from Assemblymember Lloyd Levine's office, and then Hayes Lynn will be next after that. Good morning.
Good morning. Councilmembers, my name is Khan Matu. I am a field representative from Assemblymember Lloyd Levine's office. The Assemblymember would like to offer his full support for this motion, and we are very excited to be working with Councilmember Alacon Gardniss on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Hayes Lynn, and then John Chaney will be after that.
Hi, I'm with Boxer Rescue Los Angeles. I first want to thank you for supporting AB-1634 on a state level, and we hope for your continued support with our city. We do do educational programs. That is what we do, and it is not enough. I'm with a purebred rescue with over 150 purebred dogs. As a nonprofit, we have to be regulated with the IRS, with the Secretary of State's office. We are asking the same of breeders. Thank you very much, and we really hope for your continued support.
John Chaney. Then Ed Buck will be after that.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I grew up in Somar, California, and I remember as a kid, every so often, my dog, our family dog, got pregnant, and our parents sent us to the grocery store to either give away or sell those puppies to people going inside the grocery store. And about six months ago, I saw kids doing the same thing. And it amazes me that 40 years has gone by, and people still have the same frame of mind with regard to dogs and cats and life itself. I can't believe that humans haven't evolved enough to value life in any form. I'd like to address, one lady that spoke a few minutes ago and said something about, she misspoke, she said she had a license. There's no license to breed dogs. Anybody can go in the garage and breed as many dogs as they like without any regulation, any concerns of safety or health. They have voluntary situations with, in regards to AKC, but there's no oversight. There's nobody looking over their shoulder and saying, "You're putting too many dogs in the field." I'd also like to say that if you look in the newspaper every week, the classifieds are full of dogs going anywhere from $300 to $3,000, AKC-registered dogs. And I would like to know if these people are paying taxes on all these dogs that are sold, all these cats that are sold. I don't see that there's any oversight to make sure that their funds are being paid to take care of these animals and the leftovers that are being put in the shelters. The shelters are full of dogs and cats that are killed. 400,000 dogs and cats were put into the shelters last year alone, and the state of California spent $250 million housing and euthanizing dogs and cats and building animal shelters when the simplest solution would be to mandate spay and neuter programs. I'd like to think of this law as a marker in the future where we'd all like to be.
Thank you very much. Ed Buck is our next speaker.
Good morning, counsel, and thank you for considering this important legislation. Responsible breeders support this legislation because responsible breeders realize they are unique. Not all breeders are responsible. Not only is your action the correct humane course, but it is resulting in millions of taxpayer dollars being saved. It is responsible taxpayer-wise, it is responsible humane-wise. But there's an important public safety issue here. According to the CDC, 75% of all dogs that bite are unneutered males. They're more likely to be roaming, they're more likely to be feral, if you will, in poor neighborhoods. And the bad news, small children are the most likely bite victims. May 20th begins National Dog Bite Prevention Week, sponsored by the American Veterinary Medical Association and the United States Postal Service. It's sponsored by the Postal Service because letter carriers are the second-most likely victim of those dog bites. What is interesting about California is that while we have the distinction of the most dog bites, we also have the distinction of having the area in the nation for the letter carriers that has the highest incidence of dog bites right here in Van Nuys, California. While the national population suggests we should have proportionally 10% of all dog bites, we have 15%. It's not the kind of leadership that we want. I congratulate you on your efforts, and please move forward. Again, not only will it save money, it will save a lot of people.
Thank you.
The bites. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Buck. Our last speaker is out in Van Nuys, Ellen Little. Oh, sorry. Is it Little?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I can't believe that I heard someone say that there's no problem. I mean, talk about living in a bubble. Well, I'd like to say about this ordinance that it has all the promise of being a groundbreaking humane legislation, and over the years, it would also save the city taxpayers untold millions of dollars. More importantly, we must stop the unnecessary suffering inflicted on hundreds of thousands of unwanted pets who languish daily in our shelters only then to be euthanized. What a tragic waste. How can anyone want to see this continue? I'd like to add that the passing of such a city ordinance would only enhance the value of a breed dog, a dog that comes from a reputable licensed breeder. Whatever the additional cost of that license to the breeder could then be passed on to the responsible pet owner, who will then hopefully never abandon such a precious pet. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. That finishes our public hearing on this. Any of the members wish to be heard on this item? Any of the members wishing to be heard a second time, makers of the motion? I know this was waived out of committee. If not, let's go ahead. We'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Thank you. And if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith. All right, next item, please. And, Mr. City Attorney, we have a special one on the findings, please.
Yes, Mr. President. I recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, it has become apparent to city staff that the contractor at the children's museum will cease working on the project on Tuesday if the city does not provide a commitment to transfer funding for the project. Immediate action is required to begin the transfer process on or before Monday. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Anybody on the findings? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
Pursuant to Rule 23 of the council rules, that item is now before us. Does anybody wish to be heard on this item? Sorry? On the item. Mr. Smith.
Yes, I have some questions. This is an extraordinary request at the last minute like this, and particularly with the condition of the city's general fund, particularly our reserve fund, being very, very strapped. And it's unfortunate that we're forced to make a decision like this at the last minute to back up the children's museum and keep it open, or keep it going toward opening. My question is, and to either Mr. Alacon or to the CLA, CO, or anybody, what backs up this loan? When we give a loan to a general department, we have the ability to take it out of their funds if they don't pay back the loan, or we find another way to do it. This is a quasi-city agency. We don't control the funding, the operations of it. So what backs up this loan?
The motion would authorize the city clerk to negotiate a contract. What backs up the loan is, in essence, would be ultimately the assets of the children's museum. If they don't repay the loan, then the city would have to initiate legal action to get them to repay it.
But if it's not operational and open, it's just a hulk of a building that's not open yet. So we're putting money into a project, which is really important. We've already sunk in, what, $18 million, I think, into this project. Now we're being forced at the last minute to float a loan to keep it going. If it doesn't open, then all we have is land value and a partially-built building. So again, this is a very risky loan, I would think.
Well, yeah, the assets would certainly back it as well. And, I mean, in terms of the status of the building, it is, in fact, almost complete. It is 80% complete. And I think the funding that Mr. Alacon is proposing here as the loan would make sure that the contractors don't walk off the site and stop the work. So it would appear as though there isn't much chance that we wouldn't at least have a completed facility. Obviously, I can't assert to you today that it will be operational, but at least in terms of having a completed asset and a completed facility, there would appear to be very little risk that that won't be the case.
Well, I hope, are you going to be reporting back as to then what the negotiations are and how this is structured? Because I'm very concerned, Mr. Alacon, you've just come here, but we've gone through a number of excruciating months dealing with our reserve fund, and we've depleted it tremendously. Our reserve fund is far below what we want it to be at this very moment in time, and taking more out of the reserve fund really puts us in a very damaging situation, quite frankly. So I'd like to know, you know, what we're going to come back with as far as terms. I'd like to know what the plan is to see that we're made whole on this as quickly as possible, because we're a very slim margin right now in our reserve fund.
We will, the motion also directs my office and the CAO to report back in 14 days on the status, and we'll be working with them on their fundraising. Mr. Alacon had a motion last week that directed, or asked Ms. Chick to conduct an audit, and we'll be working with her on the scope of that. And we are, quite frankly, in a situation where they've received substantial public money, they've received Prop K money, Prop 40 money, Prop 12 money. There is some liability or obligation to repay that money if the facility doesn't open. So we're clearly between a rock and a hard place, but this is a stopgap measure in a loan to make sure that the contractors don't walk off the site and construction can continue.
Pursuant to our council rules, Mr. Weiss, the chair of the committee, will be our next speaker, then the makers of the motion will be after that. Nobody had pressed the button previous to Mr. Smith, just procedurally to let people know. Mr. Weiss?
You said I chaired this committee?
That waived it out. Oh, I'm sorry. I was confused with two things. It's Mr. Parks that I meant, and then we'll come back. I'm sorry.
Parks, why?
Excuse Mr. Weiss.
I say this all the time.
I get you guys mixed up a little bit.
Yeah. Look at that hole.
Mr. Parks.
So I like being Mr. Parks instead of Mr. Weiss. I'm glad you clarified that. We had a conversation earlier, and I think you basically reduced my level of concern because you said, the way this is set up, we are basically going on a dollar-for-dollar match. This will be a contract with the city clerk and the contractor, and that there is a repayment to the city within a year.
Correct. Mr. Alacon's motion specifically provides that for every dollar that they have in hand from private contributions, the city would match that dollar up to 1.75 million. The city clerk in the contract will specify the terms of the repayment, but yes, any money they receive from the city would have to be repaid to the city within 12 months.
Okay. And so it was shown on our books as a loan until July 08 or something like that?
Correct. And as long as that money is repaid before June 30 of '08, there would be no impact on the reserve fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Alacon?
Yes, members, thank you very much for considering this motion. I agree, this is an interesting way to approach a very troublesome problem with the children's museum, but it is also a phenomenal program that must be protected. We have invested so much, as Mr. Smith has pointed out, that 80% into construction is not the time to pull the plug on the project. The opportunity to provide a children's museum to the city of Los Angeles is obviously a great one, but taking helm of the 7th Council District, I recognize also that we must protect the dollars. So the nut of this motion is to take what was proposed to be a grant of $980,000 and turn it into a loan of 1.7 million at the end of the day. So this, and furthermore, and most importantly to my satisfaction, stimulate the private investment into the children's museum, because the private investment, the children's museum will not be a success, will not generate the $5 million in projected operational expenses a year based on its current fundraising of less than 1.5 million in private sector funding to date. And so this is a motion that frankly, the mayor has encouraged and worked with us on to help in an urgent situation with regard to keeping the construction going past Monday, but also recognizes that we need to challenge the private sector to step forward for our children. And in this case, the children's museum is that opportunity. I believe that the children's museum is up to the task of raising that money, but if we were to offer this as a grant, maybe some of the contributors might think twice. So we're offering this as a challenge loan. And by doing so, I think that we will protect the completion of the children's museum project. We will protect the city's reserves in view of the fact that this is a loan, and we will be in a position to not worry so much about the funding or the ability to pay the contractor for construction and get to focus on finishing the project, which is what all of us want to do. So again, I want to thank you for considering this motion. I share, Mr. Smith, your concern about the viability and the practicality of this. The CLA will report back to us on the specifics of the loan structure, but I am absolutely confident that we are up to this task as a unified project between the children's museum, the private sector, the city of Los Angeles, the county, the state, all who have invested heavily into this project. Finally, let me just say that it is very important to me that we increase the private sector participation. As I stated, currently, the project has raised $38 million with 27.5 million coming out of the public sector. That formula is not a formula for success in my mind, and so I would like to see the private sector funding, and this actually stimulates that, so that at the end of the day, the monies that are raised as a result of this motion will be 100% from the private sector after the children's museum pays back the city of Los Angeles. So with that, I urge your eye vote. Let's do this one for the kids. Let's do, let's make sure that we are not worried. Oh, I'm sorry, I neglected to talk about the audit. Controller Chick has agreed with us that it is appropriate for us to conduct an audit. That audit, I believe, will be a helpful way to understand exactly the fiscal status of the organization, but we are, again, our partners, and we take responsibility for that fiscal status as much as we hold the children's museum responsible for that fiscal status. And so with the help of the controller's office, we will also produce a document that will ensure the further viability of this project. So again, I urge your eye vote, and thank you for your special consideration.
Mr. Weiss is our next speaker, and after Mr. Weiss will be Mr. Weezer and Ms. Gruhl.
I want to ask Ms. Sisson some questions, because I actually, I know a good deal about this museum, and I think it's a wonderful thing if and when it happens. But I certainly, Mr. Miller or Ms. Sisson, I don't think I've seen something like this in the five and a half years that I've been here, this type of loan to a private entity, albeit a nonprofit, at a moment of financial distress for that entity. Hold my time while you think if there's any precedent for this.
Mr. Weiss, offhand, I don't recall any. Certainly, there have been, you know, many, many projects that are done by nonprofits that have gotten CDBG funding or some other funding sources or, you know, additional Prop K allocations, but I don't recall a loan from the reserve fund like this in the past.
Okay. Tell me exactly how the loan will work. How will it go out? Describe the matching mechanism, Ms. Sisson, and how will repayment occur?
Basically, what's being done here is the 1.75 million moves to the reserve fund and then to the GCP. The construction contractor has indicated that seeing that money there is enough for them to continue. them to continue. It'll give the museum 30 days to raise that money, dollar-for-dollar match. They get the 1.75 million, they will have not only their funds, but they will have available the city's funds of 1.75.
So let's say hypothetically that in the next 30 days, the museum, I don't know if it's, first of all, it's not necessarily raises its pledges, receives pledges of 1.5 million dollars from the private sector. What would the city then do?
The city would see those pledges and take those pledges on good faith and would be willing to release its funds to pay for construction invoices.
Do you agree with that, Mr. Miller?
No, I think the way the motion is instructed, there's sort of a two-step process. In order to keep this loan valid, the museum is going to have to show that it has pledges for 1.75 million within the next 30 days, and then as they receive the cash, they will come to the city and show that they've received the cash, and the city would release a like amount of cash.
Okay, so, all right, so wait, the first question I have is, what is sufficient for the release of city cash? Is it showing a cash receipt by the museum or the receipt of a pledge?
A cash receipt.
Cash receipt.
Is it a cash receipt? Because the motion says pledge. Show me in the motion where it says cash receipt. If, I apologize if I have misread it.
I think that there are two.
No, but just show me in the motion where it says cash receipt. Do it on the mic. Do you see what I'm asking for?
I'm sorry, I'm.
Yeah, it says pledge.
Okay, is your recommendation that it be cash receipt? Because that's certainly what you just said.
Yes, the intent is.
The city will provide a dollar-for-dollar match as a loan for each private donation received.
Correct, as opposed to a pledge, for each donation that's received, i.e. cash in the door.
Sorry, say that again?
If you look at the third paragraph from the bottom, it basically says, "Funding be conditioned upon the museum receiving pledges. However, the city will provide a dollar-for-dollar match for each private donation received." So the pledges have to be there, but the city does not release its funds until the actual donation is received by the museum.
So just so I understand, Mr. Alakon, the city loan will not be released until there's actual cash from new private donations in the children's museum?
Yes, it's only regarding, there's two separate issues. The pledge is the 30-day period, the receipt of the cash is dependent on when that pledge is received in form of a cash, which they show to the city, and then the city will loan the money.
Bottom line, though, no city funds are released unless new cash is actually received by the museum.
Yeah, and it has to be tied to a pledge that is received within the next 30 days.
Which makes, so that makes it a new pledge, that makes it new money.
Absolutely.
Then when the new money hits their bank, then and only then could the city release funds in connection with this loan.
Right.
Okay. How will repayment occur?
The, even the mechanism for repayment, the contract would require, and we'll work with the city clerk and come back to you in 14 days on exactly how it would work. I would anticipate that there would be monthly payments from the museum to the city for any money that's received. So from, they have 12 months to repay any loan. So if they have, if they receive cash of $100,000 next month, and the city releases $100,000 to them, then they will have to repay that $100,000 in June of 2008. So it would be an ongoing repayment, and I would anticipate probably monthly.
And, and so is your anticipation that the entirety of the city loan would be repaid within 12 months, full stop? Or will it be rolling 12 months from the city's disbursement to 12 months? In other words, if the city makes part of the loan, Mr. Alakon, let's say the city loans them $250,000 December '07, when is that money due? 12 months from December '07 or 12 months from the beginning of this process now?
I think, what we had anticipated is it'd be 12 months from whenever the cash was received. Certainly, the council can stipulate that it be received no later than June of '08.
Whatever you will vote eye for.
No, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking these questions, Mr. Alakon, because I think we just, in terms of doing oversight on a Rule 23 that releases seven figures of city money, I just want to get all of the conditions out. So don't read any, you don't know me that well, don't read anything into my questions, I just want to know the answers.
No, either way is fine with me, but whatever the council would desire would be fine with regard to that. So if it, all needs to be paid by June 30, whether they receive it June 29 or not, that's fine with me, but if we give them a year from the point they receive the funds, that's fine with me as well.
You know, I'll ask, I'll ask you all for a recommendation on that.
It would be preferable to have it be repaid by June 30 '08 so that we have the reserve fund whole.
There you go.
Okay, and then the final question I have for you is, and we all wish this entity success, if the entity cannot make repayment, are there any other city funds discretionary or otherwise that could be used to backstop payment to the reserve fund?
In terms of this project, there are a number of funding sources, both voter-approved, Prop K, state, and the only thing that would be available is funds that are at the discretion of the council district.
As a backstop to repaying the reserve fund?
I have to take the advice of the CIO. I mean, and she actually is more familiar with the details of the funding streams for this project than I am, and if she says so, I believe it.
Well, let's start, I think you are to be commended, Mr. Alakon. The last couple of days, you have just jumped on this children's museum issue. It is clear that you want to see it succeed, you do not want to see it fail, and that I recognize there's an imminent threat to the museum right now, and my hat is off to you for acting very quickly, not just on behalf of the people of your district or the Valley, but on behalf of the kids of LA. That's what you're up to, and I want you to know I appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Weezer is next.
Thank you very much. Have we done this, was a question answered, have we done this in the past? Please hold my time.
I don't recall anything structured quite like this in the past, at least not a loan to a nonprofit from the city's reserve fund.
And I want to be very clear on what the urgency is. What's the urgency?
We have been told that the contractors who are currently working are going to walk off the job on Monday unless they see the evidence that there's money in the pipeline to pay them.
They're going to walk off on Monday?
Yes.
If there's no money to pay them?
Yes.
And this museum, pardon my basic questions, I'm just now getting familiar with them, and that's with the situation there, and what's the legal status of the museum? Is it a public? I heard it's a quasi, what is it? Is it a public nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit, yes.
But it's not a city agency?
It is not a city agency, no.
It is not a city agency. Okay, and have we loaned organizations such as this made loans in the past to finish construction?
Again, not, not that I can recall from the reserve fund, there, you know, there have been Section 108 loans backed by the Big If Fund, there's money sometimes that is loaned or granted from CDBG that goes to nonprofits for various projects. Again, I don't recall this specific structure, but the city has assisted nonprofits in building facilities before through loans from various sources.
And what are the risks to us in giving this loan out to the city?
I think the risk is that they won't be able to repay the loan.
And how likely is that? I mean, whenever, if I give a loan to my neighbor down the street, you know, I tell myself, is he trustworthy? Has he done a good job? Has he paid me in the past? I mean, what are the risks that you see, that we, any of us see about making this loan?
Well, you know, again, I can't, I'm certainly not going to assert that there's no risk. I think that this is, you know, 1.7 million dollars in, you know, a $40 million project. The building is largely completed, it is 80% complete, and is expected to get a temporary certificate of occupancy in August. So this project is certainly real. Now, obviously, the risk is, once the building is complete, will the museum be operating? And how much more fundraising can it do to repay the city's loan? You know, I can't, you know, I'm just not in a position of asserting what risk is there, but at the least, there is going to be a completed facility that the city could look to, the value of that asset, if they don't repay the loan.
And the fact that there's an ongoing, that Laura Chick, our controller, will begin an audit, the fact that there's a possibility of past fiscal mismanagement, if, I mean, it sounds like some, I don't know if it's mismanagement, but something happened where the construction wasn't able to be completed, would that raise any concerns to you?
I do not have the sense that there's any fiscal mismanagement per se, I've not heard accusations of that. I think the concern is that there has been various scenarios reported by the museum in terms of what their current status is in terms of having enough money for construction. I think, Mr. Alakon's motion, I think, is to have the controller go in and independently look at exactly where they are, exactly how much money they have, and where they are. But there's no, I certainly have not heard any sense that there's fiscal mismanagement or waste of money involved. We just need a clear picture of exactly where they are.
I see, I see, okay. And I'll be honest, I'm a bit uncomfortable going through this process, although I'm going to support this, but I think that, I mean, I have a number of projects in my district. I'm playing by the rules. I say, we need an armory in my district that people have been waiting to have as a youth center. We try to find funding to even do planning, a couple hundred thousand dollars. I'm told to wait. It's tight fiscal times, et cetera. I know this is a loan, but it's a risky one at that. And I'm just uncomfortable that when we are going to provide or bear the burden, the risk on our side of making this loan when there is some question as to whether they will be able to raise the private funds, just given the history of being short-changed. And, but I do think it's a worthy cause, at the same time, I just want to be very clear when we do this as to, we're putting everything down on the table. I'm expressing myself upfront about how I feel about it in the event something doesn't go correct. But I do like the fact that there are some reporting mechanisms in here, 30 days, they'll be back to report on the private fundraising. When it says they will report back to the council on the status of private contributions, in what format will they report back to the council, and what does that mean?
My expectation is that they will appear here before the council with written documentation of the pledges that they received and any cash that they received to date.
Yeah, and so we will agendize this, have them come here, and not just be an item that gets through, but we will actually have them sit down and tell us where they are with their fundraising. What happens if the 30 days, within those 30 days, they don't raise the loan amount? We don't, we don't.
The.
It's dollar-for-dollar.
The instruction here is that it is dollar-for-dollar, and if they don't have 1.75 million in private pledges in 30 days, the commitment for the loan is gone.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and I think this has been a good discussion. None of us like to be in this position in the last minute to have to do this, but I think that there has been an investment in this particular children's museum, and that it is about 80% complete. I think the questions that Mr. Smith asked are very good ones as far as ensuring the security of those dollars. I think what we are putting in your hands, you know, Ms. CIO and Mr. CLA, is the responsibility in ensuring that the contract that you design and develop protects the city of Los Angeles. It's unfortunate that we are in this position, and we hope that this attention that is being given to the children's museum will actually encourage people to come in with that public, the private sector dollars, to be able to support something. The great cities of this country have children's museums that are thriving places, and I've been to a few of them recently, and it is a, I think, something that is going to be a great place for us, and particularly in the San Fernando Valley. I think the audits that are going forward will help us as well kind of understand where some of those proposition dollars have gone and the spent, and where some of the challenges have been, and particularly in looking again at the private sector and how we can push them to go to that next step. I think the one reason as well that I signed on to this was the fact that we will pay now, or develop some, you know, role in this now, or we will pay later a lot more. We've unfortunately, in the experiences over the years, I think Mr. Weiss was asking, have we ever done this? I think we've seen some problems where we may not have jumped in to try to resolve and be a piece of the puzzle to try to solve it, where we've paid a lot more later. If they walk off the job on Monday, it will cost us, or Tuesday, whatever the day is, but it will cost us a lot more to be able to restart that and the costs associated with that and the 80%. So I think this is, we're all taking a deep breath, we're all taking a, you know, leap of faith that this will allow it to move forward and that we will be able to ensure the security of our taxpayers' dollars, and that it really is used as a conduit to solve a problem for a children's museum that is desperately needed in the San Fernando Valley.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Our next speaker is Mr. Alakon.
I just want to thank all the members for their comments, and I agree with you that we need to stay on this project as a group. This is a citywide project. It will benefit kids from Granada Hills to San Pedro, and so I really appreciate that this is not just my responsibility to ensure the financial viability of this project, and I appreciate your concerns and would appreciate your guidance as we move forward. I do believe, though, that there is a possibility that this short-term, what essentially is a short-term gap loan for, to allow the contractor to have the confidence to move forward, but there is a possibility that we stimulate so much fundraising that they don't need this loan. That's what I'm hoping for, and it may be an interesting opportunity, given what Mr. Smith said, given what Mr. Smith said, it might be a good opportunity to learn from this model, instead of granting dollars out of the reserve fund as we have done in the past. This loan model may be a better approach as we move forward. So with the success of this opportunity, then we'll, we may be a little freer to look at other opportunities that may have similar circumstances. In this case, I want to thank my colleagues in advance if you support this project, but more importantly, let's continue to build the project. On Tuesday, the children's museum can move forward. I do want to thank the mayor again for his office assistance in putting this measure together. Without the mayor's leadership on this item, I would not be presenting this to you right now, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alakon. Our next speaker for the second time is Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Smith.
Thank you. I was wondering, if this isn't repaid, we lose the money from the reserve fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any other line item in our budget or any other place where we could make up for this money? Because as I sat through budget hearings for two weeks, we, this budget committee has done everything possible to abide by our new fiscal policies that will not only keep us thinking about today but for the future fiscal viability of the city, and we stay away from the reserve fund. We've been doing that, it's so tempting. But here we are, just, there's a possibility that we will lose some money from the reserve fund after, a lot of great other programs and ideas have been, we've asked to get some money from the reserve fund, and we've said no. So there is some risk of us losing this money from the reserve fund, and it's just a matter of fairness in my view, because here we are, we're saying, well, let's put the one, this one on top of the line, should we use the money, lose this money, as opposed to us restraining ourselves from using money from the reserve fund. Is there any other place in our budget where we could tap into to say, get this money from, for the loan?
At this point in time, you would need to take monies away from other programs and projects in order to fund this, and I think that is one of the reasons the reserve fund was looked at.
Okay. There is a trust fund, I think, that I read in the newspaper, $900,000 or so. or so. Can we use that as a backup?
That is, those are funds that are available at the discretion of the council district.
Oh, that's at the discretion of the council district? Okay. And can we use those as a backup instead of the reserve?
In terms of, are there restrictions on its use? No, you could use it as a backup, but again, those are funds that are spent at the direction of the council district.
And those are at the direction of the council district?
That's correct. But they, they, it is a lawful, legal use for those funds to be used on this project.
Is it possible, Mr. Alarcon, to, instead of the reserve fund being the guarantor of this loan, that we use the trust fund as a guarantor of the trust fund, of the loan?
This whole matter emerged when the Cambrian Energy Fund, which was guaranteed for the communities of Pacoima and Lake Vuitéras as a result of the damage that they suffered for living with Lopez Canyon landfill for some fifty years. And when, when that community was up in arms, that their money was being used without their approval. So, I'm not going to make that commitment against the communities of Pacoima and Lake Vuitéras, given that they suffered so long with Lopez Canyon. I would remind you, this is the same community that put a million dollars into the Lake Vuitéras library, and this community has ponied up plenty. This is a citywide museum. The whole city is responsible for this, not just one community.
Okay. And I'm only asking these questions up front now, because, I mean, this matter came to my attention at the last minute, and I just want to make sure that the questions have been asked, that we vet this out, and accept that answer. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Huesar, great minds think the same way. I was going to ask those very same questions. My concern is, as you, and you pointed out, this is a great model. I think what you've done is, the challenge model is a great model, Mr. Alarcon, that we should use in the future. But as you said, this is a loan, and with any loan comes collateral. And I still don't see the collateral, other than the good-faith pledge to go out and raise the money, and the fact that the city is willing to put the money up to do something we're way out on a limb we've never been on before. And so, I think the discussion Mr. Huesar just broached is a very appropriate one, and that was, that money, while it was not allocated according to what you believe was the right way to do it, was a pledge made by the previous councilman of the district to complete the project. At the last minute, that money's not there now, and we are forced to make this decision today, one we are going to make, because we have to, we have to fund this project. The question revolves then around the collateral. How do we guarantee that money? How do we, as a city, protect the best interest of the people's money in guaranteeing the money comes back? And that is the question, I think, Mr. Huesar started down the road, and I want to explore again, and that is, if we do not get the money and the pledges back, can we ask you to pledge that money, the difference, whatever it may be, as the collateral for that loan until you raise the money? And it's a fair question, because I understand you've got that, that project. I have the same thing with Sunshine Canyon, and I have the same kind of trust fund, and it's at the discretion of the councilman of the district. The councilman of the district, prior to your arrival here, made the pledge, and the project progressed on that pledge, and now that that money is not there, we have to make a decision today to keep the project going. We're going to do that, because we have no choice. We have to keep the project going. We're just asking you to give us a guarantee back, and it's not just your word, but a pledge of the money that was there, that if it doesn't come back in the way of pledges and outside income, that you will then come back and back us up.
The, the question is not an illogical question, but as a policy consideration, the question is truly, do we want local council districts to guarantee funding for citywide projects with their local funds? Where do we stop? When, when the Coliseum is in trouble, do we ask a council member if they want to take it out of their office budget to guarantee something that we may do in the future? I think that's a bad policy precedent. The fact of the matter is, Councilmember Padilla introduced this motion in June, and for seven months, did not carry it through. I don't, I don't see that as, as fulfilling the commitment, if that, in fact, was the case. I don't believe that that was the case. What I do know is that when I took the helm, the community asked me not to do this. Now, I don't know what was going on before I took the helm, but I know that the community was absolutely opposed to using their locally designated funds, again, as a result of damages they incurred from the Lopez Canyon landfill. And so, no, I don't, I don't see that, that, I think it's a dangerous precedent to set, because I'll come back next year and ask you for the same kinds of commitment with your local funds, with the Community Benefits Fund, for example, with BFI. I don't want to do that. I don't think it's a good policy, and we have a citywide responsibility, as well as a local responsibility. And so, I would like to keep the two separate.
That was on my time, and I still have some time, so let me answer that, saying that I have done that in my district with my trust fund, where I lent money to Wreckin' Parks to buy parkland outside of the Granada Hills community, although I did it with the permission of the community.
With the community's support.
But nonetheless, the point was that the previous council member made a legal pledge, which this council acquiesced to.
Not legal pledge.
Wait, this council acquiesced to, because it requires a motion.
There was no legal pledge.
No, when you dispersed funds from that trust fund, it requires a council motion. So, you're saying there was no motion made, the councilman just made a pledge, that they're counting on, and now you're withdrawing the pledge?
The motion simply asked to draft an ordinance.
Okay.
There was no legal pledge.
Okay, for this money. I'm talking about the pledge that was made by the council district before you.
Pardon me?
Okay. The pledge that was made was not done in the form of a council motion, it was only a pledge by Mr. Padilla to do that?
No, 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 there was a motion.
There was a motion.
There was a motion.
Which this council agreed to, that's what I'm saying.
No, the council never voted on it.
Never voted on it.
We voted for to have them drafted.
No, no, no.
Right.
I don't believe the council ever voted on the motion whatsoever.
I believe what occurred is that there was a motion that the council did approve, that instructed city attorney to draft an ordinance and submit it back to the council for consideration. The council never actually acted on using that money for this project.
Nonetheless, the council obviously agreed with it, because we sent it to the city attorney for drafting. So, we made the first step in an agreement to do this, as a council. We made that policy decision, Mr. Alarcon, we made that policy decision already, as a council, to go forward with it, because we instructed the city attorney to draft it. Now, a technical fact that it wasn't finalized by the city attorney is another issue, but you're saying this is not a policy decision we want to go down, we've already gone down that road. That's been established, because we instructed the city attorney to draft that ordinance and finalize it and bring it back.
And in this case, the community is absolutely opposed to using that money for this?
And I trust you on that. I certainly can't speak for your community, I don't want to. What I'm asking you to do is give us some guarantee that we will make this loan, and that there will be a good-faith effort to make sure it's repaid, and if it isn't, then what are you going to do about it? That's what I'm saying.
I would remind, I would remind my colleagues that the mayor is, is working as a partner with this motion. And I think that's, that's a pretty good chunk of collateral. Not to mention, we have thirty-eight million dollars in collateral in the building itself. I don't think they're going to default on this loan. There's sufficient collateral and other leverage for the city to use to guarantee this loan, should they use it. And, but I don't think putting, putting the nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars, in essence, in abeyance, while this project moves forward, I think is unfair to Lake Vuitéras and Pacoima. And I want to be able to use that money for them this year.
All right. Well, I, I would request, and I hope you'll agree, well, maybe you won't, that when the CLA reports back, that you will bring us all these options, including that option, as a point of discussion, and also have input from the mayor on what his intentions are to help us get through this situation, as just an amendment to, as your report back, that that's included. And I'm sorry, I know your intentions here, but I think it has to be considered in light of the fact that that was a legitimate pledge that everybody thought, thought was there, and I think it needs to be part of that discussion. So, I would hope you agree with that, that we at least leave that on the table as part of the report back, and that the report back specify all the options for repayment. That's a motion.
Is that a friendly, okay, so, consider friendly amendment. Ms. Perry.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I've been in this situation so many times, I can't even begin to tell you. And I just wanted to ask, I don't know if Mr. Alarcon can answer, or if one of you can answer. So, what's, what's going on with the private fundraising, and, and were there goals that weren't met? And if so, what adjustments were made, other than, you know, coming back to the public sector sooner rather than later? And, you know, I was, I read it in the paper, too, and I was wondering, at what point within the timeline of the private fundraising, did the private fundraising efforts then realize that they weren't going to make goals, if there were any goals?
Actually, that, if I may answer that question, that's one of the purposes for the audit, is to find out what is, what are the consistent, what are standards for museum operations relative to fundraising strategies? I think there's a series of things that occurred in this particular case. First of all, the board, the initial board was prominent with people who were not from the San Fernando Valley, yet they, so their focus was on fundraising outside of the San Fernando Valley. Councilman Padilla marshaled and really energized, re-energized the commitment to the children's museum, but when he moved it to the valley, it made it difficult for the board to raise money outside the San Fernando Valley. Secondly, the board was not, I think, in the best position to raise money from the San Fernando Valley. There's been a couple of transitions in the executive director position. Most recently, Cecilia Aguilera Glassman has taken the helm for the last month and a half or so, and I have absolute confidence that she will be able to raise this money and more. And she is already working on a strategy that's specific to targeting the San Fernando Valley for more private fundraising. And so, but the other thing I would say is that typically, I think, without looking at the controller's audit, historically, projects like this typically get their, their first money from the government sector to stimulate the project. And in this case, where it's essentially a recreation function for children, the city of Los Angeles stepped forward, as well as the county and the state, to stimulate that. The private giving is not up to par, quite frankly. We need to get it there. This motion, which is a loan from the city, will stimulate, I think, 1.5 to 1.7 million in private giving. It's a good model, and I think, I think that we're trying to get to your answer. At the same time, we've got the city controller who is moving forward with an audit to get us a better answer.
I wasn't, I wasn't elected at the time, but I remember the move and the, the drama surrounding taking the children's museum from downtown over at the mall, and then people getting swept up in the tide to move it out to the San Fernando Valley. And, you know, there was a lot of emotion surrounding, and a lot of promises made to raise private money by, you know, people who have significant social standing and reputations and names in this city. And I don't know that it ever really took flight, but clearly, that the fact that you're here today is kind of sad, and it's kind of shocking, especially in a town where we all talk about how much we want to help children, and then to have to turn back to the private sector, you know, to, especially at the last minute, dip into our private, our public funds like this is, is very daunting, because, like you, I have so many projects, where I would love to do the same thing and get them done. I mean, I can recount to you many battles we've had here on the council floor, as recently as, Mr. Parks, what was the name of that project? The two church projects, where I had the loan from the CRA, and they swore they were going to pay it back, and then, you know, we practically had to strangle them and beat them into the ground to get them to commit in writing that they were going to pay it back. So, you know, I just need to note that for you, so we remember this day, you know, it, you know, there's a lot of emotion tied up in this, and then if somebody doesn't make their fundraising goal, and then, you know, we have to come back in three months and say, well, we need to do a little more, just to get us, because I understand how construction costs rise, believe me, I do. I have more redevelopment projects going in my district than probably anybody else in the city, and I know that time is money. But it's kind of ridiculous that all these private sector people just haven't stepped up to the plate to help, and now, you know, you're in the ground, whole thing falls apart, construction costs rise, and here we are dipping into our reserve fund, which is, you know, this golden rule that we try to adhere to, and it makes me very uncomfortable.
That is the last person on the speaker queue. What we have before us, I believe, Madam Clerk, is the original motion with the friendly amendment by Mr. Smith. Okay. Madam Clerk? Yes, Ms. Jerry. Microphone?
For clarification, I believe Mr. Weiss indicated that any loans be repaid, not within twelve months of receipt, but any loans be repaid before June 30th of 2008.
That will also be an amendment to the motion. Okay.
And, and, and also, the other thing that was clarified during our colloquy was that in order for city funds to be dispersed, the requirement is that there be actual cash receipts by the museum, not just the receipts of pledges. And I, there was, it was sort of ambiguous in the motion, but it's been clarified as well.
Thank you for that clarification. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
That has been approved. Next order?
Madam President, should this go forthwith?
Yes, forthwith. Next item?
Next items are motions for posting or referral.
They will be posted and referred.
There are now excuses on the desk. Councilmember Han requests to be excused on May 15th to leave at 11:30 a.m. for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Rosenthal seconds.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on May 15th to arrive at 11:15 a.m. for city business. This meets council policy.
She will be excused.
Councilmember Perry also requests to be excused on May 16th to leave at 11:45 a.m. for city business. This meets council policy.
She'll be excused.
Finally, Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on June 22nd to leave at 11:30 a.m. for city business. This meets council policy.
Ms. Perry will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Any announcements? There's, yes, Mr. Huesar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. For those of you in the northeast Los Angeles area, I want to invite you to the Eagle Rock Boy Scout Troop 188 Annual Pancake Breakfast. You could get a delicious breakfast, starting at 6 a.m. for only five dollars. I was there last year. Lots of food, very well-cooked by our young boys in, from the Eagle Rock area. It is at 2035 Colorado Boulevard. Please come out and support our young boys as they work, learn about civic involvement. Also, for those of you in Boa Heights, it's the annual baseball opening ceremony at the Boa Heights Sports Center, 933 South Mott. We will have a number of community members and a few special guests to help kick off the baseball season for those youngsters in the Boa Heights area. And finally, along with council member, council president Eric Garcetti, and city attorney Rocky DeGolio, we are co-sponsoring a job fair in Glassell Park this Saturday, May 12th, at 3750 North Verdugo, from 12 a.m. to 4 p.m. The job fair will open to youth ages 16 to 24. This will be a great opportunity to meet potential employers and network. There will be informative workshops on interviewing techniques, resume writing, and much more. Admission is absolutely, positively free. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huesar. Any other announcements? Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to announce that the LA Inner City Mass Choir, under the direction of Jeffrey Copbridge, is having their annual program on Saturday, May the 12th, at 8 p.m. at Little Zion Baptist Church at 2408 South Wilmington in Compton. Also, mentioned to young, a number of young people looking for, some are interns. West Angeles Church Community Development Department is looking for two interns, assistant project director, and also a market analyst, and they ask for those who are interested to apply by June the 4th, and they can be reached at 323-751-3440. And then, the 8th District is having its annual energy fair on Saturday, the, May the 26th, 9:30 to 11:30 at Jesse Brewer Park at the corner of Exposition in Vermont. And then, also Joyce Perkins is having her annual, the fifth annual Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative Community Forum on Thursday, May 17th, from 8 to 2:30 at Davison Center at UCLA. And then, finally, the LA Urban Policy Roundtable, under the direction of Earl Afari Hudson. And then finally, the LA Urban Policy Roundtable, under the direction of Earl Farah Hudson, is having a reception for the Villaswelan Ambassador at Lucy Florence tonight, from 6 to 7:30. And that's at, in LeMard Park, 3351 West 43rd Street.
We do have some, yes, Ms. Perry? Okay. What I'd also like to announce tomorrow is Fire Service Day. There are several places across the city where you can go to your fire station. And you can look on, I believe, the website, or call your local fire station and visit. It's a great day for you to meet the firefighters and the kids, to see, particularly after this week, and what we've seen, the real heroism of our firefighters, and to thank them personally. We do have adjourned motions. I'd ask that everyone please rise. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Madam President. It's with a real heavy heart that I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Ellen Torres, an 18-year-old who was tragically shot by gang members in Boa Heights this last week. This morning, I attended his funeral in Our Lady of Talpa in Boa Heights. Ellen had previously been a gang member, but had recently turned his life around. And in fact, this week, he was scheduled to start school at East Los Angeles Community College. He had become involved with a group called SEA, who was a prevention program in Boa Heights. But after this last week, he was babysitting his nine-year-old sister, Michelle, when someone called his name to the back of the house, he came out and was repeatedly shot. Ladies and gentlemen, this reminds of, reminds us of the work we have yet to do to stop the gang violence, to provide prevention and intervention programs in our communities. One life lost is one too many. He was from a family who cared deeply about him, and someone who had seen that there is a more positive way to go about, and he was turning that corner, when unfortunately, this caught up with him.
Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. This first motion is on behalf of Council President Eric Garcetti, in memory of Mary A. Figueroa. She is the mother of Sandra Figueroa of El Centro del Pueblo. She was a former student aide for the Los Angeles Unified School District, and was ill for some time. She was 81 years old, and is survived by her husband, five children, and many grandchildren.
I'd like to be added on to that one, if I could, please.
I'd also like to adjourn in memory of George Dixon, who was a retired machinist, who died earlier this week at the age of 92. He was a huge supporter of the Central Avenue Jazz Festival, and gave graciously every year to keep the annual event going. He was also a strong supporter of the rebuilding of the Dunbar Hotel. As a huge jazz fan, he wanted to preserve the legacy of the hotel that served as a centerpiece and a center place for jazz music in Los Angeles for many, many decades. In his passing, he leaves behind two sons, one, Reginald, who is the executive director of Dunbar EDC, and Ronald Dixon, and nine grandchildren. He will be missed, but never forgotten.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Madam President. Eleanor Bunch, finally known as Mrs. Allen to her students, taught for many years at the Osage Elementary School in Westchester. She touched countless lives with her immense kindness and compassion, as well as her deep, legendary love of children and animals. She had a special room at the back of her house, where she cared for numerous stray dogs over the years. And once she was late to school, because she stopped by to buy some raw hamburger meat to feed a hungry stray dog. Born Eleanor Waldman on February 13th, 1927, to Russian Jewish immigrants, when Eleanor was a young child, her family relocated to the Mid-Wilshire Beverly Hills area of Los Angeles. She eloped in 1944 with, quote, "a handsome second lieutenant." Her first marriage lasted 12 years, during which she received a Bachelor of Arts degree from UCLA, with a major in kindergarten and primary education. It is said that she never had a bad word to say about anyone. And when others did, she would comment that he must be having a bad day. Eleanor volunteered for 30 years at the local Mormon church in Westchester, serving children, teens, and women. Eleanor Bunch passed away peacefully in her home at age 80 on April 24th. She's survived by five stepchildren, a Paul Bunch, and George Allen, and numerous cousins around the state of California. You're invited to pay your respects to dear Eleanor at the Englewood State Center, the Mormon church, in the Relief Society Room, at 7515 South Sepulveda Boulevard, at 10 a.m. this Saturday, May 12th. I have a second one, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Catherine Zimmerman. Catherine Wolf Zimmerman, 83, passed away on Monday evening, May 7th, after a short illness. She died at her home in Mount Wolf, Pennsylvania, where she lived for most of her life. She was a 1941 graduate of William Penn High School, and earned a bachelor's degree from Wesley College in 1945. She served the York community in many ways, most notably as president and trustee of the YWCA, as president of the Junior League, and allocation chairperson for the United Way. She was honored by the YWCA as the woman who made a difference. Catherine is survived by her husband of 60 years, John Zimmerman, her brother Bill Wolf, and her 20 children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. Catherine's grandchild, Liz, and John Hodges are college friends of my deputy, Phil Tate. May she rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Seeing no other adjourned motions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.